Asked me about Jerry Ivy, and I guess he had hand walked Jerry Ivy. In the machine someplace.
All right, it is three o'clock and we're gonna have what I guess is an exciting, fun study session today.
Yeah.
So just take off the shoes, kick back and go with it.
Enjoy the party.
Enjoy the party.
The Epic Arts Party.
Right?
Yeah.
I don't know if Deputy City Manager wants to introduce the topic or go further.
Nope, I don't think I have anything to say. We'll let Brad take it away. Obviously, Mike's not here. He will zoom in for the regular meeting, but he's gonna sit out this one. So Brad, it's all you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, Brad Anderson, Director of Arts and Humanities. While our fiscal year doesn't end until September 30th, we discussed it executive staff a few couple of weeks ago about providing you an update. The public starts asking, how did it go? Are we doing okay? And we had enough highlights and feel pretty good about where things are to be able to bring you today's report. Before I go too far, I want to introduce two staff members who are here. If there's anything you don't like today, Sarah Keck started on the week of the River Festival, and so we're blaming her first. But if it's a really big deal, Crystal Hammerschmidt is our new visual arts coordinator, and she just started last week, and so we can throw anything at her. And see how they hold up to the pressure. So. To start, and I don't know whether this ruins the credibility or just gives you a heads up, the subtitle, if there was one, would be the Bad Science Report, because some of the questions that you may have or the answers that I potentially could provide are based on multiple variables. So there are some things in terms of why is this number higher? Why is this one lower? What might have caused that? Well, it could have been the weather. It could have been volunteers and counting. It could have been just COVID-related things. There are so many variables in an event of this size. We'll do our best to give you numbers that we trust and think we can verify, but some of the results may have multiple possible responses. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started, Scott. As you may well be aware or have seen the results of, we started the festival a few weeks early with Artwork Alley. This was a cooperative venture between support from numerous private organizations, a little bit of city money, and it'd been a number of years since we'd done a large-scale pre-festival activity. This one brought out a couple of hundred folks on the Friday night that we call Festival Friday, and we had DJ and trash can painting. We ended up decorating 20 cans that ended up getting spread around the park for the festival and can be used for other things. And then six artists to do the murals that are on the back of the buildings behind the Stiefel Theater on Fifth Street. Most recently, and I don't have an updated photo for this, but we have two local artists who are finishing the panels that now wrap the trash corral there. And there will be about 125-foot snake interspersed with flowers wrapping that corral, and we're using that as kind of a prototype for what we think may be future enhancements of trash corrals, whether it's in future festival years, special community projects, or other things to beautify that space. We felt it wouldn't be appropriate to have all these lovely new walls on these buildings welcoming folks in and then having the same old slats around the trash corral. So you can see that work continuing over the next couple of weeks. Go ahead. Few little highlights, 10 new food vendors. That's the most we've had in many years. Typically, four to six maybe on a stretch here. As you might imagine, getting the size of the vehicle, getting it spaced appropriately, getting the variety of food that's necessary without too much redundancy, making sure that there's ample power, gray water, other technical considerations that go with that. Four to six is a stretch. And this year, with businesses that closed related to COVID, other competing schedules, or folks who just got out of the business because they retired and there wasn't a new purchaser of that truck or that trailer, we had 10 new ones. And it was well received, and we'll see the results of that here in a little bit. Go ahead, Scott. Something that we haven't talked about yet and is relatively new, this is the second year, Feeley Creative is a video production service here in town, works mostly with the nonprofits. Their mission is telling stories that matter, and they've done some really phenomenal things. They helped us with Match Madness and creating a video that we use to promote that event and had our best year ever in raising private funds for the endowment. But then I've also challenged them as a sponsor to provide all of the filming and technical service and B footage for the next four years. For last year, this year, and the next two, they're gathering footage to help us celebrate the 50th year of the River Festival, which is in 2026. And so our idea is to have a 50th anniversary documentary video that highlights how it started, how it's grown, what stayed the same, what's been valued, how the community's been engaged. And they're interviewing some of the early founders, current stakeholders, volunteers, staff members, the community at large. And each year, they're taking kind of a special focus on those interviews. And then we're using some of that B footage to help us build our marketing material. So this year, they cut out of the Match Madness video and out of some of the work that they did, they helped us produce or produced the 30-second television spot that we bought to market the festival. It's a great partnership and a huge savings to the city. If we paid for this level of service, we would be in the tens of thousands of dollars. And they're providing all this pre-production work as part of their in-kind contribution to the festival. It's been great. Go ahead, Scott. Also, early on, or as the festival was kicking off while about 12,000 people were over in the park listening to the festival jam, we had 350 artists and patrons gathering for the premiere party on Thursday evening. We did that up in the north end of the park. And it's an intentional way that we get through private funding and some city funding, we put together these folks who've committed to spend money at the festival buying art with the artists ahead of time. So the artists would come in on Thursday, they set up their booths, we invite them to a nice catered dinner. And again, that's part of a sponsorship that we receive or a portion of that is, and then we pay for some of that as well. But along the continuous process improvement, a few years ago, we combined a breakfast that was on Saturday morning and a Friday night gathering of artists, and another breakfast and put some things together to create this unique event that allows artists and patrons to get together. And our hope is, is that around those tables, that relationships will be built, familiarity will grow, and the happiness that patrons have one year buying and being able to see or meet that artist as they return again, learn about what's new, and build those connections helps deepen those relationships and helps build better stories when our patrons go home with work. We'll talk a little bit more about the importance of patronage in a minute. Go ahead, Scott. Obviously, roving artists were throughout the park this year. It was a pretty robust collection of roving artists that did special performances in the skating pond or that met and greeted folks. We'll see some other photos here coming up. But being able to personalize or to connect directly with the spectators in the park is an important thing. And we use a portion of the entertainment budget each year to do that. So out of the roughly $115,000 a year that the festival spends on entertainment for the stages and for roving and those components, the children's stage and the other two stages, this is an important feature that gets the artists off the stages and directly into the public. So go ahead. Some other new things this year or highlights? We've talked a little bit in the past about volunteering, and some of you may be aware of the hard push that we had this year to secure all the volunteers that were needed. There was a lot of last-minute scrambling and some folks picking up extra shifts in order to cover that. We'll be assessing in the coming year how to better anticipate where some of those needs go. But this is an example of kind of the changing times. We've had, up until this year, we had the same, well, two of the three leaders of the Gates Committee came in on, well, they started working in April and early May to secure 120 volunteers. And then they showed up at about noon on Thursday and set up their trailer, set up all their supplies, loaded their golf cart, and spent the entire weekend, open to close, servicing the 120 volunteers that were there, making sure they were in the right place, covering a shift if they didn't show up, and managed to that. And I told them, when you retire, we're gonna have to have a dozen people to replace you, because it just, folks aren't ready to make that level of commitment for what, for many, it's their favorite event. And so Kansas Wesleyan stepped up this year and said, we got this. We'll put some staff together on this. We'll use the list that you've had in the past, and we'll recruit some new folks from our end. And they were excited about that opportunity and look forward to doing that again next year. Partnering with an organization like that for something as important as making sure that that first visitor experience at the gates is a positive one is really important. So they actually, I don't know if you recognize any of the people there in that picture, Mayor Davis, but it so happened, one of our photographers caught you working.
Well, I have to put in a shameless plug here. The Salina Downtown Lions Club was asked to volunteer, and we had fantastic time doing it. But I will agree, the folks who coordinated it, they're on it.
Good.
Everything we needed, any question we had, had an answer.
Wonderful. Well, we are using, when we transitioned a few years ago as an office, and again, I don't think we've spent very much time sharing this with commissions. Some of this discussion today is kind of the how sausage is made. But I think it's important to know that this isn't just an accident or just a cakewalk. There's a lot of coordination, a lot of moving parts. And in this case, the Gates, this was the first year that we used the online signup.com to help us connect with that. And we have used it in some other areas of the festival. But to back out for just a second and tell you how these committees work, we have seven staff. The seven staff oversee about 20 committees, and one staff member is a liaison to one or more committees. And then those committees help us leverage the work of the 2,000 volunteers that are necessary. And so it's kind of a big phone tree, if you will. And by putting many of these committees or volunteer slots at signup.com on our website allows the committee members to work more efficiently and everyone to see in real time who's just added in, who's dropped out, and we're not transferring things from a spreadsheet to something else. And we're also beginning some work on volunteer recognition and recruitment and retention. We have a staff member who's focusing on that and working with the rest of our staff because of how important that service is. So go ahead. In addition to the city budget or the earned revenue that we have to try to pay for enhancements and technical expenses, we also secure private funding. And the Earl Bane Foundation, as I have reported to you in the past, has done a tremendous amount of work that the city benefits year-round on. They like to help fund rather than individual one-off programs. They really like things that build infrastructure and permanence and durability. And so they helped us with funding on the original Game Street. We're getting ready to redesign that in the year ahead, but it's lasted almost 10 years and held up well. But it's time for freshening up and a redesign. This year, some of the funding that they provided helped us enhance just a standard pop-a-shot and baseball throws and other things with, you can see a little bit of the Fiber Art Commission that we did with a local artist to put those up. And I think I have another slide later, but I would be remiss not to talk a little bit more about volunteers. This year, in that shortage that we had in that call, Great Plains heard the call, and they said, hey, we have 16 college interns spending the summer with us in engineering and marketing and some other areas. Could they help you? And we had them all day on our biggest setup day. They showed up at 8:30 in the morning, and they went home about 4:30 in the afternoon. We fed them lunch, and they wrapped trees, they built Game Street. They loved driving golf carts, sometimes maybe too much, but we had a great time with them and a good experience. And it gave them a picture of our community that they might not otherwise have been able to see. And so then they had admission to the event for the rest of the weekend as well. Go ahead, Scott.
On your volunteers, that's some of the feedback I've heard, that the volunteers are expected to pay their own admission.
Yes.
And is that, would that alleviate a lot of your struggle to find people if they had call-up admission?
It's a great question, and it's one that comes up again and again. And for years, I mean, our staff bought their own wristbands until just recently. Within the last few years, we had actually a parent of a staff member who said, enough is enough. You people deserve to have your wristband. And so they would write a check every year to pay for the staff wristbands. But we, it's a catch-22. If we give an incentive like a wristband, that's city revenue. And you take $2,000 times 15, that's a fairly substantial revenue loss to give away. And then how do you recognize someone who's donated 25 hours as a committee chair with a wristband, but then also give a wristband to somebody who signs up for two hours? Or do you mail it out in advance and then they cancel, and then you don't benefit from that? There's a lot of inherent things with that, and I personally, I'm not ready to give the revenue up. I just think we need to find some new ways to recruit and retain our volunteers. And the vast majority of folks who volunteer for us willingly, including our committee chairs, have willingly supported buying a wristband while they also donate 25 hours a year in helping lead a committee.
But you got a lot of volunteers that want to help, but they really don't have the extra money.
And actually, we're gonna come to, this is as good a time as any to talk about that. The, one of the beautiful things about the festival is that we have a program. No one is denied an opportunity to attend for an inability to pay. We have a program called Festival Families First, and due to the generosity of about 10 businesses and individuals here in town, they pay for admission for families or individuals in need. We work with about eight or 10 local charities to pre-qualify or identify those folks and get lists from them. And then we send those wristbands that have been underwritten to those charities and organizations. Where it falls through are the folks who maybe are tight economically but don't utilize the services of some of those organizations or don't rely on them for communication. And so we're still doing our best to notify folks. If you have any problem in terms of an ability to pay, please let us know, and your wristband's underwritten. And so we do have a safety net there. Go ahead, Scott. Other new features this year in expansion? Last year, I think I shared with you the creative reuse of the Event Center Bridge and these tall 10-foot PVC poles with the blue and yellow that are in the lower left. This year, they got some fish on top. And then the gentleman on the lower right is using one of the hand rings. There were two rings that allowed you to pull back and forth on those PVC poles through a pulley system and get the bridge waving. And it was a beautiful, interactive thing. And Mike Miller's from Wichita, and as part of his installation art with the, in partnership with Salina Art Center, he expanded on that project this year. And many of the fish were decorated by people at the patron party and throughout the weekend. He set up a small tent and brought markers and paints and other things, and people could decorate the fish, and then he'd install those on top of the poles. And so they swam all weekend long in the air. Go ahead. We had over 12,000 on Thursday night. It continues to be one of the largest and most popular evenings that we have, of a concentration of folks, partly because there's, you know, two things in the park. There's food and there's the jam, you know? Other than the patron party at the other end, none of the artist booths are open, none of the children's games. And so this is the community's kickoff to summer. So go ahead. Our theme, one of our themes this year, we used, and I'm pretty sure that Cash Hollister helped with this, but helped, we've been trying to use some different hashtags and other marketing efforts. And Epic Arts Party is one we've held on to for the last couple of years. This year, our balloon sculptors put bigger-than-life epic installation at one end, and then also migrated through the grounds with the picture frame that you see on the left, or photo opportunities for folks and ways for them to get engaged. Go ahead, Scott. And then also this, there was a person inside the snail, and that snail worked its way through the crowd. And Colin Benson's mural on the bank of the river also helps add to that magic of the event. Go ahead. Another important element is for folks to see art being made, not just in the kids' section, but as adults. And so whether it's a potter or whether it's a drummer that is exhibiting and selling his work, but also showing how the sound is or playing music throughout the day, it is a full arts immersion. Go ahead. I told you I'd talk a little bit about patronage. There are two things that, and one in particular, that brings artists to Salina. One is, and frankly, it's their business. It's their income. And when I was an exhibiting artist, there's a lot of work I do to see how many artists were there, what the, if they released, how much the booth averages were, what the overhead was gonna be to get into the show, and then get a hotel in town, how safe was it? I had work stolen at indoor shows in Chicago, and then had other things damaged or hurt by rougher crowds elsewhere. And so artists look at all of that. And so sales, though, are the number-one reason for them to attend and to come back and to be an advocate with others. And so building relationships and having a quality award system are two ways of doing that. And so Monte and Penny there on the left purchased a piece from this artist, and we're also at the patron party. And so those relationships mean a lot. On the right, Martha Ray is giving one of the merit awards that we give. We give about $11,000 worth of merit awards each year, selected by the jurors who do onsite judging of the pieces. And those merit awards are given for the quality of the overall work or a single piece. And those artists are then automatically invited back the next year. They still pay a booth fee, but they have the security of knowing we've saved a place for them in the following year. And so after her retirement, one of the recognitions the city of Salina did was to name the top award in the Eastside Art Show for Martha. And so she presents that check and tells them about the festival and what this means each year. Go ahead. And I did mention, there were two things. Besides sales, one of the highest ratings that we get, compared to other shows and elsewhere, is customer service. Our ambassadors who take tea and water to the artists, the booth sitters, the help that they get from the time their vehicle hits the edge of the park, or the information that they get in advance, it's a big deal. And they, I had heard artists, while I was on the road, say, you know, my sales aren't as great in Salina as they might be in Columbus or Chicago, but you guys treat us so well. It just feels good to be there, you know? And so when they're weighing the two, and there's advantages and disadvantages to those things, the customer service that we provide is exemplary, and our survey results do show that. You know, we recycle in the park as much as we can. Former Park Superintendent Bob Ash and folks from the Unitarian Church come through and pick up and collect all the recycling and take that in as part of their community service. And then there's just another example of some of the roving artists interacting with kids. Go ahead, Scott. And obviously, singing to the choir here, but the musical variety is a great signature. This year, Las Cafeteras was incredibly popular, and their Latin-inspired music and sounds and dancing helped keep the crowds really active. And also, we believe, may have helped influence or to represent a, more than just a narrow mainstream of music, to our Hispanic population. About 1 in 10 Salinas are of Hispanic descent, and we are trying to be more intentional about making sure that the breadth of the community is represented in the musical selections that we have. Go ahead.
What was their name again?
Las Cafeteras.
Cafeteras?
Cafeteras. It's like cafeteria, but it's with an E-A-S. Cafeteras. Another example of diversity, as if I had told you that we were gonna have a group that did hip-hop and bluegrass, at the same time, you'd go, what? And it was a great evening, and the crowd responded incredibly well. I think there was a younger and more energetic and more colorful audience than we often have on Saturday nights. And gangsta grass really lit it up and left either that night or the next morning for a European tour. We probably won't be able to afford them when they get back from Europe, but they brought some, and we had some really good feedback on how well constructed that music was, you know? That, well, I wasn't sure what to expect, but boy, that was great. And they had people dancing and a lot of positive energy in the park. Go ahead. And Clan Tinker was another favorite, both in the kids' area and roving. They were a colorful and made-up and energetic group of performers, I believe from California. Go ahead. Go ahead. And, you know, from the time you enter the park to the experience is through, it's, this is the reason we do this every year is to just put smiles on people's faces. Go ahead, Scott. And again, our volunteers. You know, we have a number of service organizations like the Ambux that are on the left. They, you know, when you say, "Are you sure you have 2,000 volunteers?", well, there's about 120 from Salina Regional who help with the race on Saturday morning. There's another 120 that Salina Regional helps sponsor or will find to cover the entirety of the children's area on Saturday. Every volunteer slot for every activity in the children's area on Saturday has long been handled by Salina Regional. That's huge. And so, that, just that one organization and the people that they leverage, both employees and families, are 250 people just for that. So, it doesn't take long when you add another 120 at gates and all the volunteers, all of the ambassadors and setup and teardown and all of the other moving parts, it adds up pretty quickly. And I didn't know which department heads were going to be here, but Lauren Driscoll's daughter was the button-making machine. With her mother out of town, she said, "Grandma, I got this. Leave me alone and I'm going to make buttons." And she did. We have volunteers helping mark, helping set up, helping pick up trash, just about every conceivable part. If we took away the volunteers tomorrow and said, "We're going to pay for all of those positions," we'd probably add about $80,000 to $90,000 to, and that's a conservative estimate of what we'd need to pay for the weekend. Go ahead. First Treasures. I don't know how many of you know about this, but this is another unique or special offering. And it's been happening for 20-plus years and we're really seeing the benefits of this now. When it was conceived, it was a place for young kids to become patrons of the arts. So, we had, and this is in the final report here coming up, 466, I think, items made available by 83 or 90 of the exhibiting artists. There's about 120 artists. 466 items for $1 to $5. And the kids stand in line, they get a ticket, and they get to go in and shop without their parents' help. There are volunteers who help take those kids through, introduce them to the work, let the kids decide, encourage them, "Buy what you like, not what mom told you to get or dad suggested was a good deal." And they don't get to FaceTime or send mom pictures or get approval. This is about kids. We now have kids who've come through the program and aged out. It's four to 13 years old. When they've aged out, there are a number that we've heard stories of now that come back every year after having saved their allowance for a year or college savings or part-time job and buy from the same artists that they collected while they were in First Treasures. And so, again, patronage is an important part of the program. And then, as another component, the one on the right is a child selecting his piece inside the tent. Then, when they're done, they're given instructions and a map of how to get to the artist and they go and thank the artist or get to meet the artist and learn more about the creative process. It's just, I dare you not to cry if you watch that take place. Go ahead. And our other theme this year was to make it your own, you know? You want to dance, dance. If you want to eat, eat. If you want to bring your own food, bring your own food. But we are encouraging the public that this isn't our event, it's their event, and to make it their own in the way they want to have fun and be a community. Go ahead, Scott. Not going to read to you, but there's some highlights here, you know, just as a reminder, this was a quick turnaround and it felt like it. We were never so happy, June 13th, when we knew we had a full year before the next festival. It was a tight window to get all the pieces together and I want to commend our staff and committees for responding so quickly to have a good show. Gate count was down. We normally have about 60,000 to 65, somewhere in there, depending on the year, the weather and so on. We had just one over 48,000 this year. That's a real number. And when I talked about bad science, that's as good of an example as any. If it's really, really hot, our gate count might go up and we don't earn another penny because everybody comes in the morning, they hang out, they maybe have lunch, let's go home and chill for a little bit, they go home and chill. And because it's so easy to park and to access the park, then they come back in the evening, our gate count goes up and we haven't sold another wristband, you know? And so, I don't care quite so much about that as I do our earned revenue. I mean, I do like having larger numbers, but I'm less concerned with that one. We had 120 exhibiting artists, 23 art installations, about 34 or 35 of the visual artists were brand-new to the festival or back after a number of years of being away. 35 total food vendors and I already mentioned the volunteer recruitment. 1,500 slots were filled. It didn't adversely affect us because we build a little bit of padding into that, but there were some times we felt that crunch or had to double up or spread somebody out and only have one volunteer at a children's station instead of two, that kind of thing. And we're going to be working on that in the year ahead. And Creation Crossing, there were 2,000 kids as our best estimate based on the volume of stuff that they left with, of what they made and how many necklaces they made or crowns that they did or sacks that they took with all of the creations that they made. Go ahead, Scott. And now, the budget overview, and I know this is small, but it's 688,000. That includes in-kind contributions. And I want to tell you real quickly, we, our goal every year is to balance the budget. We want to have, we want to earn more money than we said we would or have our expenses come in under and to be fiscally responsible as an operation. That doesn't include the generosity of the city paying our salaries. We don't include staff time or salaries in this, but all the rest of the expenses for this, we do. So, you know, there's about $230,000 roughly in admission or attendance. Sponsorships and donations is 140,000. Fees that we charge, fees to artists, fees to food vendors. We get 18% of sales from the food vendors. They pay a small booth fee, but that's credited back to that 18%, but they, and then they pay for electricity. We don't charge for water, that's just an overhead expense as part of the operation. And then, we also have about $135,000 worth of in-kind services. That could be food, hotel rooms, transportation. You know, Home Automotive provided us five vehicles this year to help. One, to be a truck that we use to move product and equipment and other things around. We had a nice, big, tall-pane Mercedes van that they made available. And then, four other vehicles that they advertised the event with us a few weeks in advance. And we had those as backup vehicles for our staff when we're running all over town in the weeks leading up to the festival. All we had to buy for that is gas and they made those available. That $136,000, again, is money that, if we lost all of that in a year, that represents about 20% of our overall budget, our costs would go up a lot. And so, we greatly value those in-kind contributions. And then, there's some miscellaneous income as well. There's the grants. The grants are typically a pass-through. And I mentioned Earl Bane. There's others that we receive from time to time. You know, this year, we had about $25,000 from the Earl Bane Foundation, I think, and then we got another $10,000 from the state to help with some of the mural work that we were doing. So, go ahead. We'll drill down on that a little bit more. So, we sold 15,688 wristbands. That generated 210,000 in income. That's the highest in six years. That sounds good, you know? If I stop there and say, "Hey, we had the highest sales in six years." We had projected a little more than that. We had projected a higher amount of earned revenue from those wristbands based on going to $15. But historically, when we raise a price from eight to 10 and 10 to 15 and from five to $7, and then I think it went from seven to eight and eight to 10 and then 10 to 15, each time we did that, there was a leveling or a flattening for about three years. There were people who said, "Nope, too rich for my blood, I'm not coming." And then, by the third year, it kind of responds, or rebounds. And this year, we were a little more optimistic of thinking that we'd hit a slightly higher number, but we didn't. And so, the, from what our budget was, that was a little bit under, to the tune of about Reported and estimated, where we say reported and estimated, a large enough percentage of artists tell us how much they sold in their booth, but not everybody. So, we take those artists, add that total, divide it in and get a per-booth average and then multiply that by those who didn't report. So, it's an estimate, but it's a pretty faithful estimate that we did about $420,000 worth of sales. We don't see that, but we do see $300 from every artist who exhibited as a booth fee and they pay for electric also. So, the total income, I mentioned already, was $17,000 below our budget. Munis and Debbie, I need to talk to her because the, I believe that the approved budget from the city, we're going to be pretty close to breaking even on that, but I'll wait till the end of the fiscal year to tell you that for sure. And again, that's on September 30th. We also changed our accounting systems this year and Debbie was very generous in helping us in that we have a fiscal year for the festival, but because the fiscal year doesn't align with the budget year for the city, she's now using project-based accounting for us so that we can get a true picture of exactly, you know, of everything we spent last October through December, along with this year as well, so that we're comparing things the same way. You know, we'll have a better report at the end of September. Go ahead. And finally, the last couple of, little bit, our expenses, while the income was slightly below, our expenses are going to be significantly under budget. There were some things that we did to save some money this year or to not spend or where we could realize some savings or had increased. We were a little bit less heavy on some of our marketing and advertising, but a little more targeted in some new areas that didn't cost us quite as much. We didn't spend as much regionally in print and did more digital and some of that through Facebook and other sources. Our reach was extensive, but our costs were down. And so, all said and done, we will finish, I am confident we will finish in the black well above our budget projections overall. Artist booth sales, I mentioned the importance of that. Through CPI, through process improvement and some other intentional things that we did to scale the show back and to improve some efficiencies and to try to encourage patronage. On the East Side Art Show, booth sales, I said, increased $2,000 when, eight years ago, those booth averages were about $2400 to $2700 per booth. When you take 300 off for a booth fee and three nights of hotel at 100-plus and gas and time and the other things, you don't get to go home with as much if you're feeding a family. We needed to get that up. And this year, I believe the total per-booth average on that east side is about $4,600 per booth. That's substantial. And that puts us in a very strong position for those artists to be happy and helping market the show to others. And I already mentioned First Treasures. Go ahead, Scott.
How do you, you said they pay for electricity. How, has everyone got a meter?
It's a flat rate. We charge a flat rate fee for a limited number of booths. We can service, I think, about 30 or 40 artists with all the outlets that we have in the park. And we've run some estimates on what those electric, I mean, they don't run air conditioning, so it's mostly a fan, a credit card machine or charging their, or their lights in a jeweler's booth. And many of those are LED now, so the draw is pretty low and it's not a negative. We're doing, we're doing okay on our electrical fees.
And then, there's, is there another fee for a food vendor?
Yes.
Because they don't usually use more.
Yeah. The food vendor fees are different based on the draw that they have, whether it's a 220 direct wire or a 110 or whatever. It's not a flat fee for the food vendors. Those are, those are calculated differently based on the draw that they have. Just some general observations, both from our photographers and from some feedback from citizens. It appeared that our audience was more diverse than it has been in the past. We'd like to see that continue and we do believe that the musical programs helped. But again, that's another bad science. It could have been many other things, but I do think programming helps drive attendance. We had some new media partners, including Salina 311 and some others who helped us with our digital and online marketing and we're going to continue with that in the future. Anna Pauscher, who isn't here, helped coordinate a lot of that effort this year. And some highlights of what else we're going to be looking at is public seating and mobility are going to be explored into '23. We removed all the bleachers last year because of COVID. There was a lot of positive feedback for that, but with larger crowds this year, that needle shifted and folks are saying, "Wait a minute, we can't all carry our chairs in." So, we have chairs that are available on grounds, but we may also, in a couple of select areas, put some bleachers up, but we don't want to interfere with sightlines for others to be able to see the stages as well or to be able to move through the park. So, we can seat more people, not on bleachers, but we also want to accommodate those who need to be able to sit. So, those are, along with the on-ground's transportation, we're talking to OCCK about strategies for how to get people around the park easier, especially with our aging population. There's some need to help with that, especially on the hot days. Go ahead. And then, quick snapshot of what's coming. All of our evaluations are done. Those 20 committees all have evaluations post-festival. We tear it apart, what worked, what didn't work, what do we want to change for next year. Then, our staff does a three-day retreat after all those committee reports are in and drill down further. And then, we have a master list of, that's about seven pages long or so, of what is going to be changing for the year ahead and what we're holding on to. We're also, this week, timely for this presentation, there are three sessions this week for anybody who has an interest in talking about Sundays at the festival. Our attendance on Sunday has, over the decades, ever since the Jam became part of the event, first 10 years of the Jam, it was a free event, no admission required and the park was just open to anybody on Thursday night. When we made it an event of the festival and started it and it grew in popularity to the 12,000 people that are there, we saw a proportional decrease on our Sunday attendance. We're trying to figure out what to do with that. Financially, it would make more sense not to have anything on Sunday, just close the park on Saturday night and start putting things away on Sunday. But there's also a desire to make sure that we've done all that we can to make Sundays viable. And so, we're asking the public for their help and input. And we have three listening sessions this week that are scheduled on Thursday and Friday to hear feedback. The Arts Ever After Endowment Catalog is being presented to private donors. I did not bring those with me today because I couldn't remember. I believe that I distributed those to commissioners. I believe that I distributed those to commissioners sometime after Match Madness. But we are working on building a $10 million endowment for the long-term sustainability of the festival and other arts programming. To give you a quick example of the effect of, or the importance of this, if we had $3 million in an endowment and drew the 4.5% to 5% a year off of endowment funds that are typical, that would generate enough revenue to cover all of the private cash donations that are made for the festival. That would be a huge game changer. And so we're going to be pushing that really hard in the years ahead, not as a capital campaign, but just to help people remember as they're doing estate planning and planned giving and Match Madness and all those times to please remember the festival. We're working on new branding for the festival. We've had our current typographic mark for over a decade. And as we move towards our 50th year and look at some things like letterhead and online and other forms of marketing, that it's time for a change. So that's going on. And then volunteer recognition and recruitment is going to be high priority. Yep. And I'll be done. That's it, I believe. Next one, questions. So.
Timed it perfectly.
Yeah.
Well, I will say one thing after being in Atlanta, Georgia, and spending $44 to go into the Georgia Aquarium for all of two and a half hours, $15 for four days is a real good bargain.
It's about 35 cents an hour. It's the best, it's the best investment you could bank, so.
Brad, do we get, my, my, do we get any feedback from the vendors as far as the Sunday sales and stuff, both the artists and the food vendors? I'm just thinking, is that a drag on them to be there Sunday if they're not generating the revenue they are in the Friday, Saturday?
You know, that's a, that's a big question, and it has two different components. The artists sell about 28% or 24%, I think, was the, was the report of their sales in visual arts are on Sundays. Now, that's higher than the crowd would indicate, but it also means that there's folks who probably shop all weekend, don't really buy, and make Sunday their day to go back and do their, me too. I look all weekend as I'm moving through the park, but Sunday's my day to wander through and take advantage of a quieter day.
Tire wreckers.
Yeah. The artists, the years I was showing, they affectionately called some of the folks who said, well, I'll be back, the B-backers. And they said, the B-backers never be back, you know. And, but, but we do. And so that, whether or not we could compress three days of sales into two and have our numbers stay strong is a question. From a food vendor standpoint, I'm not sure economically that it, that they might say, no, let's keep me here and I'll earn what I do, and it's a day to just start wrapping up and being done. Because they're not going to break down and pull out at midnight and not have another hotel night. I mean, if we close it Saturday night at 10, there's, we're not talking to the vendors first. We're talking to community first. Then we'll, if there would be a recommendation, that affects a lot of things that would bring us back before you and with our vendors and contractors and others.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how we get the attendance up on Sunday. I like Sunday because it's less crowded. But also, that's when you go back and you buy, you know, the merchandise. And also, it's when you finally heard the, a lot of the artists that you want to go back in here for the last time also.
Right. And to go back to the programming point, we have four, we had 3,000 or 4,000 people more than average the year we had the Youth Symphony close us out on Sunday afternoon. They were going to DC for a, for a performance, and it was the only chance they were going to play publicly before they left for Washington, DC. And so it was a great way to have family and friends and others hear the Youth Symphony play. And that drew folks. So, but part of what we're struggling with on Sundays is having featured entertainment at the hottest part of the day, the second week of June. And so we may have to look at some devices, like shade devices, misting, other things to help make it more comfortable.
And don't forget the 150 pastors in town that you better have a conversation with, too.
Yeah. Yeah. In the early days, there was a Sunday service at the festival. For quite a few years, there was a kind of an ecumenical, a Sunday kickoff, and that.
Why not bring that back?
I think all of that is on the table as far as programming, and I'm not sure why it disappeared. I think it had moved out before I started, but I remember for a decade or two, that was part of Sunday programming.
I think it was kind of, you know, for all the vendors and everybody, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was for anybody. Yep.
If I can, just so we have a five-minute break.
Yep.
Brad will be here, I'm sure, in the next few minutes. If you want to ask him questions, make comments, grab him now.
It was a good, it was a good year.
It was, it was fun. We'll break for five minutes and be back at 4 o'clock. All right, it is, is my microphone on? It is, it is 4 o'clock, and we are ready to start our weekly Selina City Commission meeting. I'll ask the city clerk if the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I guess we're going to just get right to it. We have no awards and proclamations or a public hearing, so we will now move to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the amended minutes of June 27, 2022. And item 5.2, approve the minutes of August 8, 2022.
There's not much to give you an option to withdraw here, so we'll just.
Mayor, I move, we approve the minutes of both June 27, 2022, and August 8, 2022.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five, nothing. Moving now to administration, item 6.1.
Item 6.1, approve resolution number 22-8065, authorizing the mayor to sign a wall ownership agreement, grant of easement and grant of permission to attach an electrical box conduit.
Mayor, I'll be recruiting myself on this item.
All right, thank you. And the city manager is joining us remotely today.
I am. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to zoom in. I'm recovering from COVID, but doing my best. So the item before you relates to Campbell Plaza. To give you a little bit of a background on the history of Campbell Plaza, it was renovated in the mid-1980s. It was, further renovation was part of the Streetscape project. It was done as part of the downtown renovation. And so a number of plazas were renovated. Campbell Plaza was delayed in conjunction with the work that was being done on the building on the north side of the plaza. You may recall that they had to do some extensive brick veneer replacement on it. And so we coordinated with them. We commenced some work, but postponed that work so that we weren't all working in the same area. And then there was some very elaborate and lengthy discussions between city staff, the city commission, and the property owner at the time about possible use of Campbell Plaza. And so I think it bears noting that there's two entities referenced in the staff report. One is Restore Properties, which is a property ownership and development group. The other is Restore Construction, which does building renovations. Restore Properties owned the properties on both the north and south sides of Campbell Plaza and was under contract to renovate the north building into what's now the Prequiem Pair. The Wheat State Hospitality is the corporate name that owns the property at this point. So the city commissioners approached about the possibility of initially deeding the Campbell Plaza over to the owners of Restore Properties at that time. That was not approved, and we then ultimately entered into a license agreement with Wheat State Hospitality to allow both public use of the plaza and their use as a dining area and entertainment area for outside dining from Prequiem Pair. As part of that whole conversation, then, there was discussion about the renovation of Campbell Plaza, the stage in particular, and Restore Properties expressed concern about the back wall, the south wall of the stage, being attached to their building. And they had concerns about water damage or leakage and wanted to do some investigation in terms of trying to assess. So ultimately, we entered into a guaranteed maximum price contract with Restore Construction to complete the renovation of Campbell Plaza to remove what we called the overhead structure, which ultimately got moved to Santa Fe and Ash. And that guaranteed maximum price contract accounted for completion of Campbell Plaza, installation of the new stage on the east end of Campbell Plaza, relocation of the overhead structure and construction of the stage at Santa Fe and Ash, and then removal of the brick veneer wall that was the back of the existing Campbell stage and was affixed to Restore Properties' wall on the south. So Restore Construction commenced that work, and there's common ownership, not identical ownership, but common ownership between Restore Construction and Restore Properties. And so they completed that work or initiated the removal of the brick veneer from the wall. They identified that it was very securely attached and no longer had concern about contributing to any type of water damage. So the removal was delayed, and there was conversation about alternatives. So the agreement that you have before you is providing for the brick and the CMU block wall to remain in place, to transfer ownership and maintenance responsibility of that to Restore Properties, attached to the property that they own in the south, and to grant them an easement for that wall to be located over the projection that it projects into Campbell Plaza. The city would still retain the underlying ground ownership, and it would be an easement for the purpose of that wall being there. If Restore Construction does not remove it, and Restore Properties is OK with that, then that removes us from the equation, and we no longer have responsibility for ongoing maintenance, no responsibility for removal. In the staff report, I did include an excerpt from the scope of work that details what was called out in the contract with respect to the existing brick veneer serving as the back south wall of the existing Campbell Plaza stage would be removed in order to provide the adjoining property owner access as well as allow repair, renovation and waterproofing the exterior wall of the existing building at 129 South Santa Fe at the private property owner's expense. And then it provided that the existing mural may be replicated and/or memorialized in a different location. So we are now nearing completion of all of the elements of that guaranteed maximum price contract. There are a few punch list items left that are being resolved, but we wanted to bring this to you to formalize the transfer of the ownership responsibility of that wall since it's no longer going to be removed as originally contemplated, but it's acceptable to the property owners to the south, Restore Properties for it to remain and for them to take ownership of it. There is no fiscal impact for us in terms of added expense. By way of this agreement, we transfer ownership and maintenance responsibility to Restore Properties. As far as options for your consideration, you could pass the resolution that's been provided. You could approve the resolution with amendments as you deem appropriate. You could postpone consideration to this specific date and time and provide us with additional direction in terms of additional information that you'd like to consider. Or you could vote to deny the resolution, resulting in the contractual requirements remaining in place. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Not being in the room, I'm not sure who's in attendance, but I expect that Jim Toich, Public Works Director, is there, who's been the project manager on this project. I'm not sure if the owner representative of Restore Construction or Restore Properties is there or not.
Mr. Scray, I'll just ask one question just to summarize for people here, just to simplify this. The city still owns Campbell Plaza. We own the brick veneer. We're transferring ownership of the brick veneer to Restore Properties. We're transferring ownership of the brick veneer to Restore Properties. We're then giving Restore Properties an easement to keep the wall that we just gave them on city property.
That is very precise. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Is there any requirement for that wall to be finished off in any particular way with some kind of veneer or anything?
I know they have intentions to do so, but we did not include that in the agreement. I believe, and Jim Toich may be able to speak to this more directly than I, that Jacob Wilson with Restore Properties is working with the campus project to make preparations of that wall so that it could be a site for a mural, but frankly, wanted this agreement to transfer ownership responsibility and did not want to wade into the middle of that additional transaction responsibility, just left that out of this agreement intentionally.
Yeah. From looking at that south wall, I agree, we don't want to mess with that. We saw the mess they had with the north wall when that came down, and it looked to me like that was another disaster about to happen on that south wall. But I would like to see, you know, because that new area looks really nice there, I would like to see something done with that south wall as far as.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Jim Toich, Director of Public Works. Throughout this project, I've had conversation with the property owner and the, and Mr. Wilson, Jacob Wilson, who is the contractor who's doing the work. And I spoke with him as late as Friday, and we were discussing the, as we were, I was giving him the agreement to review over the weekend and for their signatures. I just visited once again what the intention with the wall is, and he assured me that they intend to, one, restore the CMU blocks, fill in the gap that it currently exists where we had to move the electrical box, and then they intend to use a finishing material over all of the blocks and over the stucco portions so that all, because there's different edges, so to speak, so that all the edges have the same finished look to them. And then, this is one of the walls that is part of the mural project that will happen later this fall, and then that wall will then be ready for the artist when he comes to do the mural.
If I can just clarify that, that is the intent. We specifically did not make that a requirement of the agreement, just so that it wasn't a long going thing that we had to police and monitor. It's, they're accepting the wall as is, and then they can proceed as they choose. With the exception of finishing up the blockwork around our electrical camp.
Question, I stopped down there and looked at the wall on my way down here, because this thick packet about a brick wall was.
It's helpful to see the wall, for sure.
It's helpful to just see the wall. We could have saved a lot of paper, but are they going to finish that to where it blends in? You know, you've got the cinder block, the box, and then the original wall. Are they gonna, got a plan to blend all that, or?
Yeah, there'll be a, there'll be a, a, it won't be stucco, but there will be a finished product that goes over the block and over the stucco, so that all of the different elements of the wall will at least have the same color in general appearance.
All kind of come together.
Yes.
Yeah. All right.
And the, I have been told by those who are responsible for the mural, that the mural artists will incorporate those edges as part of the mural. So, that will also be blended and made to, you know, be one holistic art piece.
Okay. Yeah, it does look nice down there outside of the wall. And while I was down there, I do have some good news to report, that the Prickly Pear is opening tomorrow.
Very good. All right, any questions from the public? All right. Mr. Gardiner, any line that you could, thank you. All right, any action to be taken?
Mayor Davis, I move, we approve resolution number 22-8065, authorizing the mayor to execute the attached wall ownership agreement, grant of easement, and grant of permission to attach electrical box conduit.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 22-8065. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four, nothing. And we can ask Commissioner Ryan to come back in. All right, we can move to 7.1.
Item 7.1, consider acceptance of public utility and drainage easement dedications on the Slayne County Jail site.
Mr. Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you are aware, Slayne County has acquired an 18-acre tract of land that's on the south side of East Pacific Avenue, east of Front Street, and their plan for that property is to construct 151,000 square foot building that would house a new Slayne County Sheriff's Department and jail. And in April of 2021, you approved a ordinance that re-zoned that property to a planned development district for public use for the jail project. A building permit has been issued. Project and site work and utility work is underway. There are two elements of that that involve the city. One is they are constructing some public water lines to provide domestic water supply and fire protection for the jail facility, and that consists of a public water line loop that will loop all the way around the facility and contain fire hydrants. And then, this property drains primarily from southwest up to the northeast corner, and they're constructing a stormwater detention pond in that corner to catch the runoff and then release it under Pacific Avenue to the north. And so, because that, that will not be a public pond, but it will be dedicated into a public drainage easement, and the purpose of that is just to give the city commission control to make sure it's not converted to another use without city commission approval. As to the public utility easements, when you have a water line and a public utility easement, that denotes that that is publicly owned and maintained. And since the county is not replating this property, those two easements need to be done by separate instrument, which is attached to your packet today. So, there would be no fiscal impact if you accept the drainage easement. Slayne County would be responsible for maintenance of the pond. The city's utility division would take over maintenance of the public water lines upon completion. So, your options this afternoon would be to accept those two dedications from Slayne County and authorize the mayor to sign the easement documents on behalf of the city, or you could decline to accept the offered easement dedications and provide the county and staff with further direction. I'd be open to any questions that the commission might have. In most cases of new development, we're involved with a subdivision plat, and the easements are just dedicated as part of the plat, but since there's no replating or plating here, this is being done separately. So, with that, I'll see any questions you have.
Commissioner Longbine? Right? None? All right. Any questions from the public? Comments, concerns? Any action to be taken?
Mayor, I move, we accept the offered utility and drainage easement dedications for the public water lines and stormwater detention basin serving the Slayne County Jail campus, and authorize the mayor to sign the easement documents on behalf of the city.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the offered utility and drainage easement dedications for the public water lines and stormwater detention basin serving the Slayne County Jail campus, and authorize the mayor to sign the easement documents on behalf of the city. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Any other business?
None here.
None? All right, Citizens Forum.
Mayor, I do have one thing. As you're aware, the city of Slaena did submit a grant application, and I asked Martha Tasker to come up here and just talk a little bit about the results that we received from the federal government last week.
I'm glad you did. I'd made a mental note to ask someone when I walked in to give an update on that, and totally slipped my mind. No one more deserving to explain this.
Had to bring a few notes. Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. As you probably remember, we submitted that grant on April 15, and we asked roughly for 36.7 million with the grant limit being 25 million, and the other 11.7 was city and Friends of the River funding. So, we received an email from the Raze Grant team, which referenced a 21-point million grant, and asked the city if we could find another 4.9 million, which we had a meeting, and you all graciously agreed to continue with the full project. And then, August 4, received another email from them asking for a breakdown of the Fourth Street Plaza streets and boardwalk, and provided them that data, and the result of that was an additional $2 million for the project, which is how we got to the $22.1 million award. And that became pretty real when Senator Moran called and said, "Congratulations, you have a $22.1 million award." And there's only two in the state of Kansas. The other was Kansas Wildlife and Parks, which was almost a $25 million award or right at the max. So, I think a total of 166 across the nation. So, we're pretty fortunate to have received this. And I guess I give you a little bit of the description about the project. It includes seven bridges, two pedestrian underpasses, one at North Ohio and one at South Ohio, three and a half, four miles of trail, and the trail would be lighted, and a multimodal hub at the midway. And the one that I'm excited about is a retaining wall at the water, east of the water treatment plant, because we're always fearing that's going to fail, and the railroad tracks, and that's how we get our chemicals to the facility. So, to get that repaired is, is nice. And then, also included a maintenance facility and boat ramps that will be used for maintenance, and I'm sure for other boats to get in and out of the water also. Included the Fourth Street Plaza, which includes some work at Fourth Street, and the boardwalk from Iron Avenue. The way it describes it makes me think it's all the way to Mulberry, but I don't know if I can quote that with confidence, but that's what I'm hoping for, is the entire boardwalk that we have planned. And then, some flood mitigation and an aquatic conductivity outlet pipe out at the discharge channel to where the fish can swim back and forth and allow movement from the river back into the channel. And all of that, at that time, with contingencies and engineering totaled about 36.7 million dollars. So, that's, that's really the meat of the project. Probably what's next is, I guess we've got some work to do. I have talked with HDR about getting together with their bridge designers and start talking about that project and what that means. And as far as the Raze Grant schedule, they look at execution of that agreement by mid 2023. The big, the big one in my picture is the right-of-way acquisition that we need for the project, and that's, and the NEPA process is mid 2023. So, we'll have to get started on the right-of-way pretty quickly and probably look at some type of an outside firm to help us with that, because there will be a few properties to acquire. The, the goal is to start construction in about mid 2024 and to have the construction complete by mid 2030. And these all fit within their mandatory dates of the, the grant. We have to have our dollars obligated by September 30 of 2026, so we're ahead of that, and have all of the funds spent by September 30 of 2031. So, you can see that this project really is going to include a series of design and construction projects over the, the next six, seven years. So, it'll, it won't happen overnight. We didn't get here overnight, and we're not going to get all this work done overnight, but that's in general the schedule. Would you have any other questions?
Is this a pay-as-you-go, or do we get all the grant funds upfront and then we have to meet the timelines?
Well, we've been told it's you get the grant monies upfront. Mr. Woods and I spoke about that, but most of the projects I've worked on, we usually spend the money and get it later, so we haven't got the official word on that unless.
Yeah, we haven't got any official word, but we believe we'll get the money upfront.
Yep.
I was just thinking, kind of like with the shilling mitigation, if you get it upfront, you get to invest it and make a little bit of money on that to help with your future.
Investments are a little more user-friendly right now as far as.
Getting a little better.
So.
Yeah, so, okay.
So, since I got to come up here, do you have any other questions on that topic? I might hit on one other highlight we had in the last week or two, if you don't mind.
The floor is yours.
Okay, the Smoky Hill River Ecosystem Restoration Project. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers came and took a tour on August 9. The purpose was to give Colonel Van Eepes, he's from the Northwest Division in Portland, Oregon, overview of our project and just see the condition of the channel firsthand. And he had three other staff members with him, or support staff, and then also Colonel Rayfield, the district commander from the Kansas City Office, was there with six support staff, and then their public affairs specialist, and they had a few people that I think were the bus drivers from Canoplas Lake. They were on a three-day tour that included stops at Canoplas Lake in Nebraska and Iowa after they left here. In our tour, we met them at Milbrook Park, and we looked at that area for the sediment removal and the condition of the channel, and just the, no water moving, and talked about what the project would include with them, and their staff also spoke to that. Then we moved to Iron Avenue and looked at where the dam is and talked about the step pools and all the safety features and what that does for us, and the aquatic ability for fish to move through that. And then, we were getting near the end of their time, but we were going to drive them by and take a look at Lakewood Lake, and we stopped, and they pulled in behind us and got out and took a look at that, and we're pretty impressed with the way the lake looks and what we planned to do to raise the water level and bring it back into shape. And I would, I would guess, out of my opinion, they were really pleased with what they saw in the project firsthand. And kind of where are we going from here? The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers had completed some cost estimates for the project, and they were much higher than projected, you know, last December, January, which would put us in a situation where the per-project limit would exceed anything that they could approve in Kansas City or in Portland. So, as they look through this, they're trying to decide, how good is our estimate? When they did their estimate, they used a 50% contingency, which may be high, maybe it should be something less. And they also looked at a local index and a national index, and actually, the national index was lower than our local index. So, the costs were in the top half of the 20 millions, which, with the cap program being a $10 million core number, that leaves a large portion left for the, for the community, and probably would not get approved through the core because of that difference. So, but they're back taking a hard look at the estimates that they've done and trying to decide, what should that consistence, or that contingency be? What they do is look at the potential risks and what does that mean to them, the inflation, what possible, possible things could be different in the project. They hope to have that completed in the next few weeks, and that'll get, really give us a clearer sense of what are the project costs and where might we go. The options are, if the numbers would look favorable, that we could possibly stay within the cap program, as long as the per-project limit isn't exceeded too much. We talked about converting to their general investigation program. It doesn't have a, a limit, but it has a 65% federal, 35% local, or some other program. They referenced a program. They were starting to run up the chain of command. chain of command to see if it was possible. But really, they're trying to find a way to give priority to these cap programs that are currently in place and to avoid any delays or excess costs and hopefully make that a seamless transition. So the truth is, I think the meeting went really well. They were excited about seeing what the project was and realizing that it really was a project that did need to be done. And I think at the end, they're committed to completing the project with the city and would really like to have a project that we're all proud of at the end. And Jacob was also there.
I think that's right. I think the key takeaway is that we have the area and the district commander are both onboard with the project here in Salina, and they're willing to work with us to make that project the best thing that we can do and the best thing that they can support. So I think there's going to be a lot of conversations moving forward. That process is probably not going to be quick. As you, I mean, we started talking with the Corps originally in 2017. So it's been a slow process from here. It's probably going to continue to be a slow process, but they are at least onboard and they're willing to try and move us as quickly as they can. So I think it's all positive. It's all good news moving forward and we'll just see where it goes here in the next 30, 60, 90 days.
And with the grant project for the bridges, obviously, we'd rather build those when the channel's dry than when water is moving through it. So based on the schedule I gave you earlier, you can see where we have a little time to work with the Corps and sort this out and do the right thing. And as Jacob said, build the best project that we can within their program and within our funding abilities.
Well, I'd like to thank staff for having all these reports available and being able to answer, you know, request for information, tours and everything on a moment's notice because it's, what you just summarized, I don't think any of us can imagine how much work it requires to have all this ready moments' notice.
Well, after, been working on it from 2010, so you can almost wake up in the night and state the numbers and the facts and that type of thing. So it kind of sticks in there and really, for me, this is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime project for our community. So really excited.
I'm just hoping that we're all healthy enough to walk down the boat ramp unaided in another nine years, but just-
We'll all hope for that.
I won't look to the side, but just thinking to myself, I say, "Ooh, okay, yeah, that's going to be a close fit."
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah. Mid-2023, that's when you expect the funds to be released?
I'm going to let Jacob answer that. He's been through a Raze Grant.
Yeah, I think so. The next part of this process, and so they've announced, they've given an announcement that they've awarded us a grant, but they haven't contacted us for the next steps. But the next step will be, we need to come to an agreement with the federal government. So there's a whole process that we'll have to, you know, sit down and kind of hash out terms and then there'll be an agreement that we enter into with the federal government. So that is the part of the process that's probably, it could take, you know, six, seven, eight, nine months. Hopefully, it doesn't take that long. But as soon as we get through that process and we have an agreement that we're both onboard with, that's when the funds will be allocated.
And you've got a target of starting mid-2024. Is that starting actual construction or the engineering?
That's according to their schedule that they provided us in our Raze Grant. Now, I think all of that's probably open for some changes. They gave us what we call our, I'd call them key milestones and to construction start 14 months from obligation. And they thought to get to that agreement is about eight months. So that's a proposed schedule that we put in our Raze Grant based on the availability of materials. I'm hoping is much better by then and more certainty. But that's a plan to start construction.
Okay. And I was wondering, the Oakdale Bridge and the Walnut Bridge, are they part of this? Do they need to be replaced?
Oakdale. Not Oakdale.
Oakdale's okay.
It's fine. The Walnut Bridge, it has been discussed about whether it would really remain in the future or if it would be removed. So it's been talked about, but the early-on decisions was contemplate removing it, but we haven't went through a public comment period on that. So it's not included in here. But it's very low and would not allow for canoes or boating. So something will have to happen to it, but the thought was it would come out of place because of iron and all of the different bridges. They're very, very close proximity. So, and they're estimating the bridges, see if I can get one that I think is similar, maybe. The Elm and Ash Bridges are roughly $1.6 million is the estimate. Midway Bridge is 1 point, well, might as well say 1.6. It's just a shade under 1.6 million. So that's why there's consideration about the Walnut Bridge and whether it's viable as the project goes on. But it was not included in this grant for that reason, the Walnut Bridge.
And then something that I've wondered for quite a while, this all happens, what becomes of the old cutoff channel at Indian Rock?
The cutoff channel?
Well, that's where the Corps diverted the river.
That will remain functioning as it does today. The majority of the flow will go that way during the normal days when the river's flowing. And then if there's a flood, the water will continue that way, everything. And that will function as it does today.
I didn't think there would be enough water to go both directions.
The water that we take in for this channel is, in the winter months, we're proposing about 10 cubic feet per second. In the summer months, about 80 cubic feet per second. The pipe that goes through the channel on the inlet is 54 inches in diameter and that controls the volume of water that you can actually get through the channel and then the slope of that. So it limits the flow, according to the old Corps calculations, to about 100 cubic feet per second based on the size of the pipe. So that's what restricts the flow that comes into the community.
Okay. And with this award, I've heard a lot of discussion and a lot of misunderstanding of what it's for. I think it would be beneficial sometime maybe in the spring to have another one of those community informational sessions.
Right. I think that would probably be a very good idea based on when we learn a little more about schedule and how the project's going to lay out, we could do that and just speak specific to what this project means, what it covers in the spring. Okay.
All right.
That's all.
That's all? All right. Others?
Yep. Thank you for-
Thank you.
Good update.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to Citizens Forum, which is an opportunity for anyone to come to the podium to express thoughts, questions, concerns. And we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes.
Norman, I'm Salina. Martha mentioned aquatic life movement from the Corps engineers. You need to ask someone about, what does that entail? You cannot dam, divert, or disrupt the natural flow of water. That's a federal law. In the Klamath River Basin up there in southern Oregon, northern California, there are four dams coming out. Berkshire Hathaway owns these. They're coming out. They already took one dam out in the Olympic National Forest up in Washington State. They put 800 pounds of dynamite under that dam. I watched it blow up. They have to come out because we are interfering with aquatic life. If the flow of water comes down the Smoky River or the Smoky River does not have enough flow in it, you will not be able to divert it into this channel. The Supreme Court is ruling in on a lot of these laws. They're going back 250 years, the agreements that were made with the Native Americans. Here's a picture of the United States, what it was. This is not the United States, gentlemen. They're ruling that this land still belongs to the Native Americans. This land right here that the city of Salina is sitting on is Pawnee land. Your burial site out here, that is still Native tribal land. You had to close it, didn't they, in 1989 when they had that closed? The Native Americans, they're going to the Supreme Court. They went to law schools, the Native Americans have, and they're using the white man's laws. And they're winning one court ruling at a time. And they're getting their lands back, their sovereignty back. We've got a mess and we've caused it. So the Indian Self-Determination Act of 1975 is coming into play. Are you going to make a proclamation that this is Pawnee land? The Native American Recognition Act of October is coming up. Maybe you can do that in advance. So I don't see this going through. The Native Americans got their own courts. They've got their own lawyers. And they're winning. They're going back 250 years, the agreements that were made. So don't count on everything you wish for because that ain't going to happen.
Hi, my name's Linda Reynolds. I'm president of TNK. Today, we received a certified letter from the city saying that we have temporary signs, banner signs, and mobile signs at our office. It doesn't say anything about what it is or what it has to do with. If this has to do with the mural that's on the side of our building, it would be nice that they tell us that.
Specifically, who is the letter from?
Salina Community and Development Services.
Is there a person's name attached to it?
Sebastian Beza. Beza.
I would have to look to anybody.
Well, this is-
The reason I'm asking is because that specificity, to be honest with you, the five of us probably aren't going to know about and-
I just wanted you to be aware that I'm a little upset about this. I mean, we've had issues because we had yes signs there during the vote on private property. That was a separate issue. Then we get this in the mail today that says we are in violation and it doesn't even really say, other than we have a temporary sign, a banner, or a mobile sign. So I just wanted you to make sure you were aware that all of our city is being, spending money or whatever to be on this kind of stuff and not more important things. That's all I have to say.
Well, it's always important to someone who doesn't want it up, which any of us can be on either side.
Yeah, but why is it that when I call, when people are watching us and videotaping us, they don't deal with that? It's like there's a special group that's zeroed in on us because we're not doing what they want us to do.
And those may be two different groups receiving those two different types of phone calls. I would just suggest that you meet with the deputy city manager after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Calicoat, resident in the 200 block of South 8th Street here in Salina. Have two issues I'd like to speak to you all about. One is the homeless issue downtown at 7th and Walnut. We have people literally living in your city parking lot. As I understand, there was an ordinance passed for no camping in the city. I'm not sure if that's true or not, but as I speak to officers that are regularly down there wasting massive amounts of money just because people are drunk down there and causing issues on a regular basis. I live in the Pioneer President's Place Apartments. Both the Lincoln and the Roosevelt Building residents have spoke to me multiple times. We finally got one individual who was sleeping in the bushes trespassed. He's now been trespassed twice. And other people are getting the idea it's okay to live in our bushes on our property. Well, our management outfit is out of Topeka and they're excusing the term worthless as tits on a boar hog as far as doing any maintenance on our property or taking care of things. I was told by our quote-unquote "property manager" that we had the authority to trespass people off the property. Well, city law enforcement says there's nothing on the books to that, that it has to be the property owner or management entity to take care of this. And that individual's name is Patrick Dugan with Topeka Housing Management Services. It's the worst management company we've ever had since I've lived there now four years. And it's just getting to be a major issue. I've had residents threatened because they've called the police on these homeless folks, threatening them because they say it's okay for them to live in our property bushes. We've got people over 100 years old living in our apartment place that are afraid to even come out the doors because of the problem down there. And the second issue that is also attached to this is the ordinance that was approved, what I believe was mostly for the downtown restaurants, which was the drinking, open container ordinance. It's been nothing but a major hassle since that was approved. I can see the restaurants, that's fine. They take care of their property. But having people walk around throwing beer bottles, busting glass, beer cans all over the place downtown, it's a major waste of money. The city officer's hands are pretty much tied for the ordinances that have been passed. I mean, they're telling us, "Look, we can ask them to move on, but that's all we can do." And I think something really needs to be done about this sooner than later. I've had to tase two people that were inside our building. So, you know, and I almost went to jail for that, but the officer seemed fit not to charge me with an assault charge or disorderly, whatever it was. But we can't keep this going on downtown. And it's, I'm saying that because I've lived there long enough. I've lived here in Salina since 2008. And I know we're at the crossroads in the middle of the country. People are going to come here. We've got a mission here that is the only one, I believe, for five counties that's of any size. But at any rate, we need to do something about the homeless issue downtown and the drinking issue on the streets.
Okay. Deputy city manager's definitely taken some notes of the several issues you raised. And, well, this is putting the city attorney on the spot and not prepared to answer, I understand. Can a resident of essentially an apartment or a condo call if they're not the owner? Or is that local or state law?
Mayor, I'm not familiar with the particulars of that. I couldn't speak to that today.
Well, Pioneer Investment Group owns the property.
Right. I was just wondering if you, as a resident, have the ability. Several issues here which we'll have to investigate.
Yeah, criminally trespass somebody off the property. Law enforcement says they're not aware of us having that right. And I said, "Well, we live on the property. We help maintain the property. Since we don't have regular maintenance and management, we haven't had a manager in that apartment complex since the 31st of last year in July."
Okay. We have several issues which we're going to have to sort out and get back with you.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Todd Welsh, TWI Homes, 300 South 9th. Mayor Davis, commissioners, good to see you. It's been a while. If I may, Mayor, could I hand you some documents for you to look at by chance?
As long as you have a copy for the-
I have a copy for it.
-city clerk, city manager, and the attorney.
If you have a spare, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody wants to talk about water today? I'm going to talk about sewer. We're going to switch it up here a little bit. I don't come to you today to complain by any means. I come to you hopefully to fix something that I've noticed in our building community that could be a potential safety problem. And I'd like to bring it only to your attention. And I didn't mean to bypass engineering and/or utilities, but I wanted to bring a particular instance that came up. If you look at page one of the diagram that I gave you, that is our current way of doing development right now. He brought me some as-bilts, and they are not correct. The original as-bilts that were put in are not correct. I did speak with, after that, we called Quentin, who put them in, and he brought in a set of new as-bilts, which we had never seen. And he told me exactly where it's supposed to be, so we dug there for a full day. If you-
Could you-
Yes, sir.
Explain to us what those are.
Oh, as-bilts?
Yeah.
As a developer, I hire Cal Valley Engineering and/or Peterl's. They come up with a set of plans and tell me exactly where the sewer needs to be put in the water. And in our industry, we call those as-bilts, as it's built. That's where the things are supposed to be. If it does get changed, one of the things that is upsetting is, as a developer, we pay anywhere from $25,000 to $50,000 to have a little guy in a white truck sit in that development all day long and make sure that the plans get put in accordingly. So when I can't find those, I'm going to get very frustrated, as if they were doing their job if they can get it found. Again, I'm here to try and help the matter, not to complain against anybody. I would tell you that Martha and Wayne did a phenomenal job. Monte from the sewer did a phenomenal job. But if we go through real quick on page two and three, again, I just brought pictures along there. We dug along a 75-foot lot, 12-foot deep, to try and find a 4-inch pipe that looks like this. We brought in three sets of as-bilts. We've done, I even called Commissioner Linkowitz up to look at it. Commissioner Hoppick came up and looked at it. At one point in time, we were only nine feet deep, and Mr. Commissioner Hoppick looked there and goes, geez, you can't find that? I said, that's nine feet. It ended up being 15 feet down is where the sewer pipe is, and they brought this one up to about 13 and 1/2 feet is where we located it at. The reason I bring it to your attention is, and I just talked to Wayne, who was doing some investigating on it, is he says it sounds like we're pretty par for the course of what Slane County does to what everybody else does. I would tell you that OSHA says anything that's dug more than five feet requires a trench box. Now, my plumber does not carry a 4,000-pound trench box on the back of his trailer or his van to get that done. I just don't understand. And I loved what Commissioner Hoppick said, was if you can't come up with a solution, don't come up with a complaint. And my complaint is, is if you look at one of the last ones that is there, is that's my plumber standing there with a pipe that we've already started to backfill before I could get there to be done. But that is dangerous, yet that's what we're requiring our plumbers to get down in there and do, is find the sewer tap. Even if it was located, we have to go 14 feet down and put a 90 or 45 on there and bring that back out. Now, I think that you'll probably hear that people will say, well, TNR DIRT is now GPS in those end. Well, guess what? In 12 years, they may not be around. Are the GPS, are they given to Director of Utilities? Do we know exactly where those are at? It's a safety issue. And that's par for the course of what we've been doing. And if other communities are doing it, it's going to take one guy to fall in there, because these guys are not putting trench boxes in here, yet we're 13 and 14 feet in the ground. Now, we're digging out and getting that done. My proposal is, exactly what you're seeing my plumber hold there is, why can't we not go ahead and put the 45 or the 90 on and bring it up within five feet, which is what OSHA says you have to approve without a trench box? And if we need to bring that up and cap it on the top, or we need to bring it up and do something that's there, put in a five-gallon bucket with concrete with a rod that's through there. I'm not quite sure exactly what it is. I'm just bringing it to your attention, because if not, it will be somebody bringing it to your attention that says we killed somebody because they're 14 feet and it fell in on them. I'll be open for questions.
Well, you're going to probably have to give us time to get smart enough to come up with questions. I understand your suggestion, and certainly sounds reasonable to me, but obviously, that's not my industry.
I agree, and I appreciate that. And I hope Wayne and Martha talked to that, because they were phenomenal. I was on the phone with them. Again, I have nothing but praises for when we couldn't find it. Trust me, I was dialing everybody I knew on my phone, because after three days, I was probably pretty frustrated. So I appreciate you, gentlemen, coming up and looking at the concerns that I had. Thank you.
I would agree with Mr. Welsh. We need to look at something that's a little safer, because you don't believe how far down 15 foot is until you have to look. And I'm guessing OSHA would not like what we're doing. And those boards, like since 2022, and I kind of made this story, as a kid, you used to go around and knock stuff like that over. So I guess there's a lot of housing districts where those boards are missing. So I do appreciate the idea. Like I said, I appreciate that. Like I said, I take people complaining without a solution. Hopefully, I know that the city would like to work on something, and hopefully, we can come to a solution that makes it safe and easier. Not only is it a cost to the developer, because I know Mr. Welsh was out there for three days digging, that cost probably gets passed on to the new homeowner. I was out there, there were four city employees out there, and that was not the first time they'd been out there. So it's a cost to the city also. So I don't know what the cost is to run that pipe up, but I'm guessing it's less than it was to have four city employees out there twice during a week, so.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, actually, I have a question regarding, so is that PVC pipe actually affixed to the main line?
It is.
The suggestion that you have, so it's actually-
At that point, that one is actually, we've 90ed off of that. And like I say, we relate to the tune of getting the picture, but we've 90ed off of that. The only thing I'm saying is, if they did bring it up in there, granted, we never know what the basement height's going to be, but if I could see that, I could dig down. And if I need to cut it off at eight feet, at least I know where it's at, and I'm digging down there for the drain of the basement that's underneath there to get it there. I'm just interested to see what solution that the city of Salina may be able to come up with for a safety concern.
And I know that, you know, like TNR DIRT, some of them may GPS it.
Is there any way to have that GPS in our system at the city that would help the developers or the builders?
Yeah, I don't know that I have an answer for that, but certainly, I think we can work to come up with a solution. I think we probably could put that information into our system. I don't think it'd be an issue, so.
That wouldn't be, you know, relying on Mr. Welsh or on TNR DIRT or anybody like that. It shouldn't be in our system as a system.
Well, the interesting thing was Quentin Smith with Stephen Contragers came up, and he said, oh, I had all these shot in. I won't mention the name of who shot them in by an engineer. And he said, oh, it's right there. And we dug for an entire day, and it wasn't right there, and now I found it today, and it's within nine feet of where he said the GPS location was shot in.
Do you have the concern with being around other, like gas lines and others?
Yeah, there's a major gas line that we, that they've mismarked, and luckily, we didn't blow ourselves up, because Kansas Gas came up and said, oh, we missed that, you know? And it's just a safety concern. I wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
So we're getting a lot of good homework today. That's good.
Yeah.
So is the gist of the problem back to the design and engineering and the documentation?
All of the above. I just, I mean, you can GPS it all you want, you can do whatever. It just doesn't make sense why we can't go ahead and put the 90 or the 45 on it and bring it up to at least OSHA standard of five feet. These plumbers, again, I don't know if you've ever seen a trench box of which I'm talking about.
Yeah, so I guess my question is-
They're not going to bring trench-
Why is it so deep, to begin with?
Again, depends on the topography of the land. You have to start a sewer somewhere and run it downhill, and by the time you get there, it just ends up being fairly deep, based off of manholes that are previously put in. I'm sure Martha and Wayne could talk to that more knowledgeable than I. But depending on where the sewer and the manhole is on the past development and getting it to a pump station and the gravity and all that, it gets pretty deep. Some land I have is going to be 19 feet deep if we had to run it back to the pump station. And like he said, you go see 19 feet in a hole, you know, you're not going to get down in it. It's pretty deep, so. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Leave this.
Yep, we're aware of the issue. We'll look into it.
All right. Thank you.
I would hope you would come up.
Ben Winholz, Salina. I'm actually not up here for Mr. Welsh's problem, but I can put a little insight into that. He is correct. Instead of a wood marker, if during the construction of the main sewer, that the risers would be put within three to four feet of the ground, or even above the ground, with a glued-on plastic cap, so somebody can't take that cap off and put stuff down into the main and actually plug it up, that would probably be, would be help with the safety issue. As far as the needing the box for when you're digging, it's not five feet, it's three feet. Anything below three feet, according to OSHA, has to have a box, basically. And I can tell you, they get quite expensive, especially when you get down into the level deep issues that he's talking about, as far as depth, that those boxes are not small. They almost had to be brought in with a semi truck. So, that being said, let's move on. I see Mr. Anderson has conveniently left the building. I am very disappointed that during the study session, that the public input wasn't brought up because of the time constraint. And we're going to go back to the study session of the River Festival. A couple of questions that I have, I have actually many questions, and they all deal with the budget and the costs. Maybe Jacob can answer this for me, or Mr. Shrag, since he's still online. Exactly what does the city give to the River Festival as their contribution to the River Festival itself?
Go ahead, and if you have some set questions already, ask them all, because-
Okay. And then I want to know, he said that, basically, he had, that the River Festival budget was $668,000, and does that include the $32,525 that was approved on April 18th for the big screen added? Is that included in that budget, or is that not even talked about? And the reason why I bring these numbers up is because he's telling us that what the wristband sales were, he's telling us that they get 18% for food sales. I've come up with a number on that. I was going to ask if there was 18% towards the art sales, or he mentioned that it was just $300 booth rental for, that would be for $120. So with that, and the donations of $140,000, I've subtracted all that, and I've come up with a deficit of $223,000. So where is the rest of the money coming from? So do we know what the city, are they on the hook for, the taxpayers on the hook for the rest of this to make it go into the black? Or is there just a set amount that we give towards the River Festival, and that's it?
Yeah, I don't-
Sorry, I don't have an exact number for what we contribute, but the River Festival generally brings in enough revenue to cover the cost of the River Festival, aside from the staff. So we pay the staff out of general tax dollars. Now, we pay their salary all year round, so it's not just for the River Festival. But I mean, we have specific accounting for the whole River Festival that we can break down, for sure.
And that's what I want to know. I realize, you know, your Arts and Humanities has a budget, basically, that's a city department. And I'm not too worried about that, because, I mean, what Brad has told us today is all fine and good, but that's his job, and that's how he keeps his job. But I'm wanting to know is, when there's this much of a deficit, exactly who comes up with the rest of that to pay it off?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, the Arts and Humanities Department, as a whole, is subsidized by taxpayer dollars. I mean, that's part of the, it's part of our general budget. So, yeah, we would cover any additional costs. There is another foundation that sometimes provides additional funds, but really, Brad is the right person to ask those questions.
And that's, yeah.
And as this, so it is, we do this as a festival fiscal year, as Brad mentioned. So September 30th is the end of that timeframe, so there are still some invoices out there that need to be paid. And as soon as that date hits, then we'll have the full accounting for the entire festival, everything they spent last year for part of this festival, everything they've spent this year for part of this festival, and then we will true up the accounting for that. So we're still waiting on some things to come in and out, but it is accounted for separately so that we know what goes specifically for the River Festival.
Good. Does that mean that after September 30th, that that will be brought up in a study session or a meeting, so that we'll all know, or?
I don't, we can do that. I don't know that we generally do, but the accounting will be-
I'm just thinking that the taxpayers need to know exactly what they're having to spend on the River Festival, besides, you know, purchasing a wristband.
Sure, we can make that information available.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Entertained the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.